Good morning, uh we'll now call the July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three council meeting to order. We will be led by our Madam Clerk with prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we do that, I also ask that if you have a cell phone, any type of mobile devices, please put those on all silent. Not off, but just put them on silent or mute or vibrate so that they do not disrupt the council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered. Laws enacted in judgment decree, assist us, we beseech thee. That this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen. Uh pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um we ask that if you have or intend to address the uh members of council that you please sign your name in. Uh to the um the sign-in sheet so that you can address council, uh the sign-in sheet is over here at the podium. And at this time, we will go for roll call. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Present.
Roots.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Present. Um at this moment, if you have any public comments on action or agenda items only, uh please go to the microphone, state your name and uh state your comment. Heron and CNN, Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Amanda Francis, three forty-eight Curlin Street, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. Number two, Lisa Harper, nine twenty-two Central Avenue, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. Number three, Donna Marie Queen, nine twenty-six Highland Avenue, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. And number four, Wendy Davis, twenty-nine oh seven West Seventh Street, Chester, PA nineteen oh thirteen. And whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined. The aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install. A handicap parking zone in a three hundred block of Curlin Street. In a nine hundred block of Central Avenue. In a nine hundred block of Highland Avenue. And in the twenty-nine hundred block of West Seventh Street in the city of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby appoint Nathaniel Burrell to the position of temporary laborer known as a per diem. For the Public Works Department, beginning July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. At the rate of thirteen dollars and sixty-two cent per hour with no benefits, not to exceed twenty-nine point five hours per week.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby ratify the employment of the following individuals as site supervisors. For the city's twenty twenty-three summer food program, Department of Public Property and Recreation. At the rate of nine dollars per hour for the stated effective dates and ending August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. With no benefits, not to exceed twenty hours per week. April Dixon, effective date is July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Tina Drayton, effective date is July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And Michelle Williams, effective date, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby reappoint the following named individuals. As members of the city of Chester Shea Tree Commission, for the terms to expire as stated. Baron Lacy, with the Ninth Street Y C C organization. Term to expire, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. David Gulecking, organization is Chester Historic Preservation Committee. Term to expire, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Helen Litwa, the organization is the Chester Historic Preservation Committee. Term to expire, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Michelle Jackson, organization is Delcora. Term to expire, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Brittany Hells, organization is Delaware County Planning Department. Term to expire, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Father Lisa Gaffney shall serve as the staff administrator for the commission.
So moved.
I got a question. I just noticed it says reappoint. Uh does anyone know, Leonard, are all these reappointments or some of these new appointments?
They were reappointed, but it expired, so some of those are reappointed.
But they all aren't reappointments. So it says, I mean, the resolution says we thereby or hereby reappoint the following, so.
They are reappointed if they've been appointed, so the question is which ones are new and which ones are reappointed.
Mm-hmm. Is there anyone that's new that has wasn't on the commission before?
That's what I'm trying to determine. I don't think Michelle Jackson was on the Shea Tree Commission before. Lisa's not here.
Lisa's not here, so.
I think Michelle was the only one that was not.
I I think it's fine for everyone to say appointed. We're appointing them to the commission whether it's a reappointment or not. So if you want to make that revision, that's fine.
So we're taking out reappoint and just making it a point?
Yep.
Okay. I have that correction made.
I was second with that correction.
Okay.
Yes.
Um are there any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby authorize the execution of R two-three-zero-six-zero-zero-one-one. By Michael Hurst, Department of Accounts and Finance. As a requirement of Pendott's reimbursement agreement system for the construction of the Highland Avenue Complete Streets.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester, known as the city. Has designated Wilmington Savings Fund Society, F S B. Known as Wisfis Bank, as its depository for the funds of the city. Which may be withdrawn utilizing checks, drafts, devices of debit.
Yeah.
Notes or other orders for the payment for monies known as items. Bearing the signature of any of the following named officers, members, partners, or employees of the city. As the case may be, known as the agents. And that Wisfis Bank shall be and is hereby authorized to honor and pay the items. Whether or not they are payable to bearer or to the individual order of any agent or agents signing the same as follows. James Luthrock, who is the Chief Financial Officer, and Leonard Leitner, who is the Chief of Staff. Further resolved, that Wisfis Bank is hereby directed to accept and pay without further inquiry. Any item drawn against any of the city's accounts. With Wisfis Bank bearing the signature or signatures of agents. As authorized above or otherwise. And Wisfis Bank shall not be required or be under any obligation to inquire. As to the circumstances of the issue or use of any item signed in accordance with the resolutions contained herein. Or the application or disposition of such item or the proceeds of the item. Further resolved, that any one of such agents is authorized to endorse. All checks, drafts, notes, and other items payable to or owned. By the city for deposit with Wisfis Bank. Or for collection or discount by Wisfis Bank and to accept items payable at Wisfis Bank. Further resolved, that the above named agents are authorized and empowered. To execute such other agreements including, but not limited to. Special depository agreements and arrangements regarding the manner. Conditions, purposes for which funds, checks, or other items of the city may deposited, may be deposited. Collected or withdrawn and to perform such other acts as they deem reasonably necessary. To carry out the provisions of this resolution. Further resolved, that the authority hereby conferred upon the above named agents shall be and remain in full force and effect. Until written notice of any amendment or revocation thereof. Shall be delivered to and received by Wisfis Bank. The city shall indemnify and hold Wisfis Bank harmless from any loss suffered or any liability incurred by it. In continuing to act in accordance with this resolution. Any such notice shall not affect any items in process at the time notice is given. Further resolved, that the persons named above occupy the position set forth opposite their respective names. That the foregoing resolution now stands a record on the books of the city. That they are in full force and effect and have not been repealed or modified in any manner whatsoever.
Um before, I I can't move it right now because I have a question I opposed to you.
Yeah, and I have a question as well. Uh Chief, are we th- this uh resolution, is it removing the signers that's on the account now? It's just adding the two names?
It's adding the two names to that particular account. Remember those bad accounts set up so that it was passed with debit card?
No, I don't remember honestly.
So remember we were looking to obtain the credit card.
That's with Santander Bank?
Right, Santander, perfect down, that's the bank.
Correct.
But there being that we get the credit card, but they would give the debit card. At least uh which is why we're opening a separate account, that puts the money in there utilizing at least a debit card.
So this is gonna be a new account open? So general fund, operating funds would be transferred over to this account? Okay.
My question is, wouldn't a controller normally be on this as well? You know what I'm saying?
Other controller will audit it, but not you.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
But these are the only two names that's gonna be on accounts?
Because there's only two parts, only two parts on the debit card. That's what it used for the city.
Hold, alright, hold on. Authorized signers on a bank account, the is it more than two names on an authorized bank account, on actual account, not the debit card, the account?
It's that account, but that account is restricted for debit card.
Doesn't it? What does the charter say? Doesn't the charter say something about the controller's supposed to be on the account?
Look that up.
Because I understand if you haven't the the adding the two names to a bank account understood. I don't know if I would say that just those are just the only two names that should be on a bank account. Um but us understanding that those two names are the only ones that's gonna be on the debit card is cool, I understand that. But you're just saying those two are the only two individuals that's gonna be on a bank account then. I don't know about that one. Can we, can should we go into executive session real fast?
Yeah, I I get I gotta grab the charter if you want me to look that up.
Um yeah, I wanna look it up.
I'm gonna look it up now. Do you have the chart?
You wanna go into executive session real fast, briefly?
You you can proceed, I'll go, you can pass that. You can pass over that resolution and I'll check the chart, is what I'm saying. You want me to do that or not?
No, we're gonna go into executive, we're gonna go into a brief executive session.
I just wanna be clear.
We now call this council meeting uh back to your order. Uh members of council just had an executive session to discuss uh resolution number six on the agenda, authorizing approval. Of authorized signers for the W S F as bank accounts. Um I'm gonna ask that uh council if we can have a motion to table this resolution uh for further review. Um and to make adjustments uh to this resolution as we move forward. Um if that's possible, can I, is there a possibility that we can have a a motion to table uh resolution six?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve. That it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds. As prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list. Dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Attached hereto and made a part herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
No.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Um just a reminder, if you choose to address uh members of council, please go to the podium and sign your name. Uh so that you might uh or may be able to uh speak uh your mind on any comments, concerns you may have. Uh at this moment, we do or today, we do not have a uh a public health service update. Um the health department is downstairs assisting and handling with the. The eyeglasses uh program that they have, giving out free eye exams and free eyeglasses. Um but it looks like we have a presentation and an update for the summer food service program.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
As assembled, and to those that are listening. My name is Beverly L. Harris, and I'm the director for the summer food program. And I'm coming out today to ask you for your help, to ask your neighbors, your friends, your aunties. To send your children out to the program. This Friday, we'll end our first two weeks of our program. And we have four more weeks to go. We're offering uh lunches, free lunches. Also arts, crafts, recreation, educational, and activities for your children. In case you have been away on vacation and didn't know about it, I'm telling you about it now. In case you didn't get a flyer or the wind blew it away, just come on out. We have a a. Site at Sun Village Park, Memorial Park, Washington Park, McLaren Park. And that's Holy City Park. Chester Park, Life and Christ Ministries on Booth Street, Bethany Church. Silver Care Cafe, which is the old Sacred Heart Hospital, Saint Daniel's Empowerment Center. And the uh site starts from, the classes start or the site program starts from eleven to three. And every day from Monday to Friday. So please, come on out. Registration is open every day, just come on out and enjoy yourself. And those that'll go down to Memorial Park. They can also sign up for the pool because we have licensed lifeguards there and they can finish out the rest of the day there. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Beverly, I got a question. Uh regis- you said registration, do they go to the parks to register?
Yes, they go to.
Each park, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly and uh and and Councilwoman uh Williams uh for the summer food program, and we know. We have to continue to feed our our babies, our children. Um and a meal is very, very important for their health and to allow their days to go hopefully sm- more smoother. Than would it, the direction it ma- it may have been going in, so. Um at this moment, we're gonna open the floor for public comments. I believe it's Corinne Butler.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um coming as a follow-up to something I presented to council a few months ago regarding the commercial vehicles that are on Flower Street between Seventh and Fourth. Um I know the last time they said it would be spoken about or have them removed, and they were removed for a few days, but now they're back in abundance. So if residents are coming from the Sixth Street side and vehicles are parked on both sides. It is a hazard because you cannot see around the corner to know whether to turn left or right. Also, on the days where they have um soccer games and the lights on Seventh and Flower is still blinking. Um cars speed off of that ramp from, was that Flower Street, Ninth Street or whatever. And that is also a hazard. Um there's also a vehicle uh motorhome that has, I guess, assumed residence. Um on that corner and is accumulating a whole lot of trash as well. So my question is, what can be done as far as getting some signage up? For um I guess some permanency of some, no overnight parking for commercial trucks or no parking. Um I understand. When Amtrak comes or whomever has to come to work on the bridge that they have to be there, but what kind of? What can be done to have some signage up there saying no overnight commercial parking? Um for those um commercial vehicles. And I have called the city, they have taken my name. And said they will call me back, but I have not gotten a call back, so now that's why I'm coming to council today.
Um thank you. So uh this has been brought to the council before, has. Um and I know um that there has been some council members and a mayor that has spoke on this. Um and I think our police commissioner and major as well has tried to address it. Um I think you just mentioned about trying to put some deterrents there such as uh street signage. I'm not sure if the Public Works Department has looked at that yet, I'm not sure of the laws behind it. Um I'm also not sure if those vehicles have been cited. I know, from my knowledge, it is legal, I believe, for them to park there. Um is that correct? It's not legal, okay?
They shouldn't be there. I I it's been a never-ending fight with me. You know, I'm I'm down that way all the time, you know, and they should not be on our city streets. I believe Mr. Robertson, that portion of Flower Street, is that State Road or is, you know, from from Seventh? Down to fourth, to two ninety-one, which part of it is is Pendott? It's all it's all ours, then we should be able to enforce it, you know? Um I have a problem with them being there, and I know about the motorhome that you're talking about. It's been there for weeks, and I've been, you know, I was told that the um. That there was gonna be a discussion with the drivers that are sitting there, because they're just sitting there. I ride past at night and they have their little TVs on, just, you know, I guess. We don't have a place for them to go here in Chester, but I'm sure there are other stops, truck stops, that they could go to. They don't have to park on our city streets, so um deputy mayor, I, you know, I'm. I'm really just concerned that we haven't been able to resolve this yet.
I'll, what I'll do is I'll speak with the the police commissioner after this, and I'll also. Speak with uh Councilwoman West and uh. Mr. Robertson um as well after this. Um I do know that there are some things that has been in the works, I do know they they discussed or tried to look into street signs. Um I also believe that there may be some type of ordinance that has been, uh the solicitor's office might be looking at as well. Uh to see what ordinances that we can put in place, so that we can start to properly cite them. Um I'm not sure of the timeline on that, but I do know that there are some things in the works. Um but if there's anything that we can do in the interim, um I'll make sure that I speak with Councilwoman uh West and the Public Works Department to see what we can do.
Okay.
Chief of Staff, had, I mean, has, have you, has anyone come to you about, I know you and I had talked about it. But has anyone else like uh Commissioner Gretzky, Major Blackwell, she and her team. They're supposed to go around and look at those vehicles that are, you know, not updated in terms of their. Tags and, you know, illegal vehicles being parked on our streets, as well as these uh com- commercial vehicles. Because they're all over Chester, all over Chester. And it gives us a bad look, and they're ruining our city streets that we are gonna have to repair.
So the answer to your question and for everybody else out there, this has come to our attention. Um everything that Deputy Mayor said is actually underway. So first thing first is right now, the way the streets are set up, it's not illegal for them to park that way. So we have to put in the right laws and ordinances in order to prohibit them from doing that. The other thing that was discussed are signage. Um as many of you know that we have ARPA funds, we have a sign plan in place that we're getting signs created. But even if we put the signs up, we have to have the law in place in order to enforce the sign. So all of those things do take time and they're all under under underway. So what you're asking for is not being ignored, it's actually in process. But as we stated up here, we do have to work with the legal team to make sure we have the right laws in place. We have to make sure we have the signs that are in place. And currently, right now, to address the issue, we do have, I did speak with Commissioner and Major Blackwell. And they are doing rotations there, but as you all know, we do it for a couple of weeks and then it goes, does well, then it. It goes back to the way it was. So I will get back with the police team and have them go back out and start enforcing that. But all of those things have to go into place that we're working on, okay?
Um Chief of Staff, I thought we had an ordinance that addressed commercial vehicles being parked on our city streets. I'm gonna have to go, I'll look for it after the meeting, but I thought we already had something in the ordinance that addressed that. That no commercial vehicle should be parked on our city streets.
I, only on certain residential areas, not on all streets. Well, you can, if you find it, let me know, but based off of we have this certain residential areas, that we can look into it.
Thank you. Um and I regret I me- I meant to mention this, please uh be respectful of the three-minute rule that we have here when you're providing your your comments. Um next, we have uh Ms. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so you're saying that trucks can park anywhere, there's no law? That trucks can park anywhere, they can park in front of anybody's residential housing, if so, if they so desire, is that what you're saying?
No, um the, it sounds like there is a, there is some law, a law on the books, but the the law does not specify or designate all residential areas where it's prohibited. Uh for them to park.
Okay, because I know that area also, and it just seemed like all of a sudden trucks disappeared, because we never had that problem. I mean, we've never had that problem in a long time, but all of a sudden, they just seem to camp out in 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 that area. I mean, we've never had that problem in a long time, but all of a sudden, they just seem to camp out in 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 that area. Um my question is, what is the status on the parking RFP?
Um, we have, the RFP was was sent out. There was a committee. Uh that convened together to look at the responses of those RFPs, uh those proposals. Um and actually, I believe today, we have another meeting with the committee um to discuss, uh to have additional discussions on that. So I don't have a timeline on, I guess, when those parking meters will get rolled out again. Uh but I do know that the committee will convene today to discuss uh more things about the proposals.
Okay, so areas where they still have parking meters and people might be putting coins in the meters. Who's? Is anybody taking the money or?
I'm not sure.
Cuz I noticed, especially around closure, their meters are still up in that particular area. I guess they were only taken down at Wyndham's turn. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't know solicitor, do you have a response?
Might have a couple quarters in there that you might want. All right, n- next question. What is this, what is the Supreme Court decision that was out for as elected officials being stripped of their powers? Of being uh heads of departments? Has that come down from the Supreme Court?
Supreme Court has not ruled yet.
None, no ruling. Okay. And my last question, cuz I thought we was on a roll with the expenditure list. Um I, and I see Councilman Ruth decided to vote no. You didn't, last time you voted yes. And you really took me by surprise. And now you voting no. So therefore, you haven't got a chance to look at the expenditures list? Again, it's not getting to you in time or?
Look, and every time it's presented to me, I don't like the uh format it's in. There's not enough time to get a resolution on every item that's on the expenditure list. I will continue to vote no if it continues.
But last week, last time was good. You had a chance.
Did you pay attention to last time?
Oh yeah, I'm paying attention now. So and 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 you said it was good last time.
I didn't say it was good last time.
But you voted yes then.
I sure do.
Well, you're contradict, you know, contradicting yourself. But nevertheless, on those expenditure lists, when you make those approvals. That means certain things that come from your department is not being approved by you. So you're, are you saying that you don't look at what comes through your department as far as what goes out to be on the expenditure list?
I'm not saying that, but no, I do not see those.
You don't see your own department stuff?
Do not.
Then then you, th- so I can see why you can't make a decision if you don't see your own department. But I'm sure your department. Because you have, you have Ellen live.
Know what the issue is. Now, now we we are a little clearer of what the issue is.
But you don't see your own department?
Uh I repeat, no.
Okay. That's kind, that's that's really, I mean, that's really strange. One week you saw it, but then some weeks you don't see it. And it it has to get approved, because a lot of things, now, it's gonna get approved anyway, the majority rule. That um things that come out to your department that you don't even get a chance to look at. So how do you know if your department is functioning correctly?
Exactly the point.
And so therefore, like there's some housing issues out there where there's um trash and debris in people's yards. And people having illegal daycares and people doing things that's not onboard.
So Ms. Smith, what you would, what you would wanna do?
What would I wanna do?
Is ask the other council people, how are they approving this forever? And they don't see their expenditure.
They didn't say they didn't see it. They did not say.
I'm asking you to ask them back.
Have to ask them, cuz they, they must see it because they're approving.
Assuming they see it. You'd never ask a question.
I s-
Most of the things in my department are operational expenses. And and I do look at those with my department head.
I s- I see everything as far as the expenditures.
That's amazing.
And revenue um for the city of Chester.
Congratulations.
You congratulating me?
I'm congratulating all the rest of you who do see this thing.
I see it.
For this from the first month I got here. How do we reconcile accounts month to month? I have never had a monthly reconciliation. For either department.
Um Councilman, have you ever requested that?
Have I? Yes.
To?
You.
You requested a monthly reconciliation?
When do we do the res- when, when do we reconcile? There is no reconciliations.
Do you have a proof of you asking that, Councilman?
Let's move on. Come on.
I don't think you do. Come on now, Councilman, I don't think you do. You can stop that as well.
Well, present me one next month. A reconciliation of license and inspection. I will review it with regard to the expenses. That have been authorized for payment for my department with regard to the expenditure report only. I will approve those expenses only.
Duly noted. Um Mister Crawford?
Good morning, Council.
Morning. Morning.
Morning.
Um, on the May tenth twenty twenty-three. Um line item, uh the ordinance as perjury, Bill number eleven, is it's a amendment. Which 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 in turn was spoke of of actually stopping trucks from, major trucks from actually parking. That was in regards to, as the young ladies, uh the thing about trucks.
What's that?
Uh, uh May tenth. Uh, one of my questions is, what is the Highland, the Highland Avenue Complete Street Project? What are you doing? That was two-day, um line item number five.
Mister Robertson, Highland Avenue Street Project. Do we have a um? I know that um, was it Penn Dot or somebody that was doing some work? What we'll do is um, after council meeting, get with you and we'll contact the um city engineer.
Okay. Uh what is the shade tree, uh uh commission?
I can't give an exact res- supposed to be, can you explain it? Chief, can you explain it? Come on. They plant trees. I don't know how else to really explain it.
So the point of the shade tree commission is to review for environmental purposes. Um so we're always looking to plant more trees for, again, from an environmental standpoint, from the ozone layer and things like that. So what they do is any type of project is being developed. Normally, they'll develop a project, trees will be cut down, but they wanna make sure trees are replaced. Also, where there's shortage of trees in areas, then we wanna make sure those trees are planted. So the shade tree commission actually are reviewing our entire city and all the trees that are within the city. So trees that need to be planted, trees that are removed, trees that are dead, uh to make sure development happens, but that we don't take away all of our trees.
Are people able to actually contact the uh shade tree?
Yes, you are. The people that are listed on that commission, you're able to contact.
Well, see, that's my other thing is that whenever they do the agenda, giving this information. It's always bullet notes. It's it's never really uh damage information. If if you were to go to the Stillwood County um meeting, they give information. Um what is these uh fortuitous that of the of the of the holes in which I gave y'all? The uh had the pictures of on Tony Carter Lane, last council meeting.
Um Mister Robertson, Carter Lane is 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 that or is it not a part of the um? List that we have for street repairs? It's not on this year's street rep- So what we'll have to do today, today, is go up there and look at the situation. Because we may, I don't know if it's gonna require a cutout in a particular area, cuz it's not the whole street.
You know, it's not the whole street, but there are a a number of holes that are actually small now. As the weather changes, will become holes deeper.
Well, we'll have to assess that. Mister Robertson and the engineer and I.
Okay. Um when, whenever there is a, whenever there is a soccer game. They in turn um put, put, put Fifteenth Street light on on blink. The problem with that is they don't always have an, have an officer there. The problem that we have is as as the people turn off of Highland Avenue. And will try to actually beat the light at, at Highland Avenue. They drive very fast. There is eventually going to be a, a bad accident there.
Wha- wha- what lights, where does it say? You said Fifteenth?
And um Highland, Highland Avenue. It's also called, also called Town Street Line River.
Oh, alright. Um he said that they're blinking lights and people are trying to rush to beat the big blinking light. They don't really.
Well, when the light is working, they turn on to Fifteenth Street. Fly through the a stop sign, trying to actually see if they can beat the light there. And then now that there's, they don't always have an officer there. They are going to, they are going to eventually try to beat what is a blinking light. And in term, and in terms of go through it. And there's gonna be a major accident there.
Things of the games.
And games.
All the lights up and down Highland Avenue are on blink. And on, on uh Flower Street too.
Okay. Guess we could talk with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know what their egress, are they egress? Um we. I'm not sure of this, the next name I have here, honestly.
Uh it's not, um, you know, S A.
Mister Celine.
Oh Mister Celine.
I didn't see you over there.
Sorry, Mister Celine.
That's his, that's his doctor's signature.
Oh, okay, yes.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, uh Hamidi Law. I uh, if you will excuse me for coming in like this, I uh busy, very busy out there and had to. Didn't have time to go home, change up. So if I can make a brief comment. Uh it's it's good seeing you, council and everyone.
You as well.
Yes, Hamidi Law. Uh let me, you know, one thing of sincerity, Adina said, the way is sincerity. There's no other way out of this except sincerity. And we are in sincerity about what? So we gotta know what to be sincere about our Lord and so forth. That's the only way. So Adina said hi. Uh this, we have to understand, oh, my name is Amin Abdul Salim. I live two forty Patterson Street, Chester. And maybe it will help us to understand, I know, I'm I'm sure it will. To know that this is two-time, it it this is, what the bad things that we see jumping now, this is not ours. If you will, this is the end of this world. This is the shade towns of mess. This is the devil's land, if you will. I'm Russian and I may say some words harder than I would normally say them in not Russian. But and we going this way, going this way, the devil's going out this, the end day, the devil's going out. We may see a lot of stuff that we have to, you know, somewhere. And going this way, this is our way, we are coming in. So knowing that, that will release some person of offer us, Insha Allah, God will. I pray that we do. Um, let me just make some brief comments here. I'm not gonna take long. I, um, yes. You think of that some, Insha Allah. I uh, the. God is in charge of all affairs, if you will. So uh let us wait and see what God do. With this that we're going through. I do not wanna make any comments in regards to, anyway, just let us be patient, see. Uh, God works in mysterious ways. Old folks used to tell us that. And. This way is quite, I mean, mysterious, what God's working. Uh, also, we are told not to have do a thing. And we were told this for a long time. Uh our parents, you know, would tell a child, don't do not have do a thing, don't you have do a thing. And they was pushing us forward to a point to meet our Lord, past this world. This world can only take you halfway. And there's a lot of evidence that support this, but and and for lack of time, it only take you halfway. God said, allow this to be done with my one hand, but what I'm gonna do with you, I'm gonna do with both my hands. So. Our parents was pushing this way, and we are opening the the way that we're going into the other half of this. Do not have do a thing. We're not gonna have do that. We're gonna go all the way. To take up and to open up the the way forward. This is what we have to do. I I I thank you for all the years, the time that you have uh allowed me to share with you. I thank you very much and may.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Celine.
Thank you.
Um Regina Mentor?
She left.
She left? Okay. Uh Deborah Plummer?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm here in half of Nobavista. There was, there was a accident in March. And our bricks were knocked down. And uh from your sign, thunder sign over there. And it haven't been fixed yet since in March. And uh I forgot the, the lady said, I forgot her name, Mustin Brown. She says that they were looking into it and so forth. But you already have the report from the police. It was on call. You have the insurance person, of the, of the person that did it. We of Nobavista wanna know when is this gonna take place of fixing up, because we like to make Chester, the people to come in. See Nobavista, cuz we did the sign, the painting and all of that on our own. And we wanted to put it back. Wanted to be back the same. I was over here before one time, was telling you that if y'all will put little bumpers. Coming around there, because that's where it really accident happens. And it happened three times there anyway. And it was fixed. So it's not fixed now for, since it was March. And I was, was just wondering when it's gonna take place.
No.
No, I have a question. I I vaguely remember this happening maybe about three or four years ago. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's on the city to repair that. Uh I'm not sure what the proper verbiage is for what that is, but and I, and I think it was repaired. I thought it was, either Nobavista has a homeowners association or the.
Association, no. It don't have an association.
I'm not sure how it was repaired last time.
I don't recall, but if it's on city property, it would be the city's responsibility if we erected it. If not, it would be.
Did we erect it?
But it it's right there at the entrance of the development.
Right.
Development. And most developments have, I I know you don't have an HOA.
Right.
But they have an HOA and signs and things like that are taken care of by the um HOA because. because the homeowners are paying into that, you know? But the person that ran into the sign, you said there was a police report and what have you? And we have the person's name and all like that.
Got everything.
Should, should, could be an insurance claim to be made on behalf of whomever is responsible for that sign. So, we can, we can- Whoever struck it.
Yeah. I don't think the city-
The person that ran into it. Yeah, but you got, but they have all, they have all that. They even have it down here.
Um, I'll check to see if a claim's been made. I'm unaware of it, to be honest, but.
So, is we now open that?
Janelle is in today, yes. So we can check right after the meeting. But it appears as though there is an insurance claim and the insurance carrier has sent out adjusters to adjust the claim. We're waiting for, um, you know, the estimates and that, then it can be fixed when the funds are available.
Oh, you mean tell me that, uh, on March to now, nobody having really?
No, I, I wouldn't say that. I would tell you that insurance claims often take longer than we would like. But, um, it sounds as though it's coming to a conclusion.
Uh, cuz I know some cars have got fixed.
I can't answer that, but-
I know so.
I don't dispute that, but it sounds like this is coming to a conclusion. I'll check. If you wanna wait around, we can check with Janelle and the tax dollars.
Okay, I'm having a problem with that.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
All right, that concludes our public comments. Um, Councilwoman Williams, do you have anything?
I'd like to say good morning.
Morning.
Uh, I have a question for the receiver. I'd like to know the information that came across my desk yesterday in reference to the unions with the bankroll. They formed a committee. So with that committee, how is that affecting our city? Money wise, money wise.
So, uh, what we'll do is, um, what, what, what Councilwoman is referencing, there was an email that was sent from the receivers. Members of council pertaining to a retiree committee and the city, uh, may be on a hook to pay upwards of three, four, five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, uh, for attorney and legal fees. What we will do is we'll discuss that internally with members of council and the mayor and the receivers team and the seat, uh, and the chief of staff on how we plan to, or, I, I guess to abide by that, I don't know if, if we have to pay it. Well, it sounds like we have to pay it, but that's what Councilwoman is, is referencing too, so, um. But I think, Councilwoman, I think we should probably have those discussions internally before we really push that out to the public on how it will, uh, really be a detriment to our financial positioning in, in this current year. All right, you have anything else you wanna add?
When we go ha- when are we gonna have a meeting?
Um, there's a few vacations going on right now. I think that we should have all members of council a part of that vacation. I mean, not a part of, no, we all need a vacation, um, a part of that meeting. So I, I can't give a date right now. We'll coordinate via email. We'll talk with Chief Leitner and see how we can coordinate, uh, uh, that conversation.
The reason why I asked that question, because I wanted him to answer it because it came from him.
Understood.
Okay, okay.
At the, at the moment, it doesn't seem like he, he wants to really answer that in this, in this type of setting. So we'll, we'll move forward and we'll address it internally and then the public will fully know, uh, what the issues or concerns or comments or what has come from that meeting and how we're gonna move forward financially. I'm with you, Councilwoman.
I agree.
And number two, number two, and it comes to the parking. By, by, um, law, there are, a vehicle under homeland security, it's only supposed to sit in your neighborhood for two hours. After two hours, that vehicle needs to be moved. And not only that, I have requested where they, where, uh, where those trucks sit at all day and all night. They sit there all day and all night. I don't understand why the Chester police cannot monitor that area and give out tickets cuz there's some big money down there. There's some money. The way they sit down there all day and half the night, I don't think it's fair to the neighborhood. And I've been down there. Okay, um, to my, to my residents, the county has put out two million dollars to reopen up the registration for the, um, for your rent and your utilities. So what I suggest you do, I have the information right here. We're gonna put it on our station for you to apply for these funds. And I need Chester, I really, really need y'all to apply because they're trying to keep it a secret out there in the county. This is so you don't, if you have any, you get eviction or anything like that. So this will be put on our station and if you need any help filling it out, I'll help you fill it out. Thank you.
Councilwoman, are you gonna, uh, similar, uh, I guess it's two years ago, maybe? You had, uh, the, the computers and laptops and the team that was in a community room, maybe every Wednesday, assisting our residents. Are you gonna try to see if you can do that again, or? Are you gonna try to have, um, people to register and apply for the rental assistance here, or do they have the? All right, good enough. Councilman Roots?
Good morning. I'd like to welcome our interns from Chester Water Authority. Hi, y'all. So glad you guys can join us. Make sure you bring them as long as you have them. Thank you. Uh, I guess I'm directing this to council. We haven't had minutes for the last couple, couple meetings. Are they on the way, or? Any update on that?
So that would be myself and Miss Neil, who is the acting city clerk. I am still working on the minutes from the, I believe it's the June twenty eighth meeting. I was almost done yesterday. We had that little storm and it messed with our computers. So, I'll have it finished up this week, Councilman. Um, Miss Neil, when she did the meeting, I miss, I believe she told me that her batteries went dead in her tape recorder, so she had to wait to, for Miss Johnson to get the download to work that, which is to me a little harder to work from because forward and backwards, it, it just takes a little bit more time. But that, hopefully that meeting will be done as soon as mine will be and this one will be there also. I do apologize for those not being ready.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And, and just to thank you for that and thank you for the response. Just so you know, there's a recorder up here that records it. Uh, the county clerk said it's a little bit easier via the recording, so, but when it goes dead, uh, they tend to try to lose, use the, uh, the, the live feed, um, that's being recorded right now to try to pick up on what's been discussed, uh, which is why it's very important for the public. Why we always say when you're making a comment, please speak into the microphone, so that the microphones or the cameras can catch everything that's been, uh, discussed and, and requested or talked about, so. Um, Councilwoman West?
Um, I'd just like to still encourage the, uh, community to, um, put your trash out on your trash day and put it out properly. We're still having concerns with, um, trash not being disposed of properly. You have cans, you should have cans with a lid on them and, um, you use a trash bag to go inside the can. And then with your recyclable items, which are picked up every Wednesday, um, you're supposed to, you can put them either in a bag in the blue can or just pour everything out into the blue can. I know that there are some concerns about some areas where the trash has not been collected. And I'm working on that with the, um, supervisor of the gentleman who collect the trash as well as, um, a member of their management team, uh, reached out to me, uh, this week. So we're gonna get together and talk about some issues that you, the community, are reporting to us here at City Hall. Um, I apologize for the inconvenience, but we are working on making things better. There's gonna be a rollout of the new trash cans on August the seventh. These are gonna be black trash cans, I guess with the orange tops. And, um, so the road, we're working on that internally as to how, um, the trash cans are gonna be dispersed to each home. So, uh, you'll, we'll give you more information on that. And, um, that's about it, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, um, just a few of my updates, uh, last, I don't know if it was last week, I feel like July thirteenth. Um, we had a American Rescue Plan meeting right here in this room. Uh, we had a, a solid turnout. Um, discussed, uh, provided some of the updates on some of the things that has been spent thus far to date. Um, and some of the upcoming projects and programs that we're gonna try to roll out, uh, in, in the coming months. Uh, one of the ones, one of the, the projects that we will be rolling out is a homeowner's, uh, homeowner improvement, um, project, uh, for homeowners here in the city of Chester, uh, to fix up, um, I'm gonna use the word critical. Critical things, uh, within your household, as far as a priority, those critical items or, uh, code enforced items would be a prior, would be the priority to be, uh, uh, rehabilitated, uh, improved within your household, so. Um, there, we're going to look to have a meeting in, uh, hopefully late August, uh, just for the homeowner program, so you can know of the requirements, uh, the restrictions, the do's, the don'ts, uh, within that. So continue to look on our, our website and Facebook page and, uh, specifically on our website, you can, uh, if you go to W W W dot ChesterCity dot com, there's a, uh, a tab there that says, uh, ARPA or A R P A, or American Rescue Plan, where you can get all of the updates, uh, of the American Rescue Plan of all of the things that has been spent, uh, of the budgeted and, uh, items that, uh, projects that we have upcoming as well, so. Again, sometime in late August, we're looking to have a, a public meeting about that, so we can roll, roll that out, uh, for the homeowners here. Um, but there's more to come with that. We're also looking to, to do some I, I T infrastructure upgrades, uh, as well. We're looking to do something for the businesses and looking to continue to improve on our, our parks as well. So we've been putting a good amount of money towards our, our, our public parks to rehabilitate the, the playgrounds and the slides and the benches and those types of things, so. Thank you to all of the internal workers who, um, are on those meetings on a weekly basis and, uh, really are able to keep those projects moving forward. Uh, my next thing is, is more so about, uh, just venting on, uh, economic development here in the city of Chester. Uh, one of the things that, uh, was a champion of, um, here is, uh, trying to find out how do we improve or increase the economic development here in the city of Chester, but most importantly for me, uh, the homeownership here in the city of Chester. Um, and, uh, members of council have discussed things internally on what types of, uh, opportunities, incentives or projects or programs that we can put forward to try to, uh, build, potentially build on these vacant plots of lands here in the city of Chester and/or to, uh, rehab a lot of the blighted and dilapidated buildings and re- or residential buildings here in the city of Chester. We have quite a few. And for us, the only, one of the ways to increase the homeownership opportunities or increase, uh, individuals to not, when they grow up here, to not want to leave here, but to, to stay here is by giving them, uh, the opportunity to purchase a house here that has a nice kitchen, a nice bedroom, a nice porch, a nice yard and those types of things. And we know that those types of, um, acts are, uh, contagious because we, then people or individuals typically, uh, tend to clean up their front step, uh, and take ownership and accountability of that, so. Uh, members of council have, uh, have met over the last month or so to talk about, uh, incentive programs that we may be looking to push out here. Um, and in turn, um, I believe that this can have a tremendous long-term effect on our city, on our residents. Um, and of course, be able to, uh, generate additional tax dollars, uh, here in the city of Chester, so. Um, we are in a city where one of the worst, if not the worst, uh, tax collecting, uh, municipalities in the, in the Commonwealth. And we need to find out, uh, different avenues to, to change that narrative here. And again, one of those ways is gonna be to find out how we put these dilapidated properties back into use, real use, so. Um, I'm gonna hope and continue to have fruitful and, um, conversations with mayor and, and council, uh, with chief of staff and the receivers team, so that we can move forward. I know we have, uh, we actually have some people here in this actual room that are, uh, s- potential developers and, and investors here i- in this room as well, um, who are from here, born and raised here, homegrown here and want to revitalize their own neighborhood. And I think that is very, very important that we instill and encourage our people to do that, so. Um, with that, I don't have anything else. I don't know if anyone has anything else to add, but I appreciate all of you physically here and sitting at your couch at home or at your job at home, uh, watching, uh, at job at work, uh, watching the council meeting. And we are now gonna call this July twenty six, twenty twenty three, council meeting adjourned.